I call this special meeting to order the City Commission, Rioran de Citi. It is Wednesday, August 21st, 2019, approximately 6:19 PM here in Commissioner Chambers, 5332 East, US Highway D3, Suite A. This time we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Ramirez, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Jones.
As far as heads, Lord, thank you for allowing me here today and conduct city business. I ask you to please clear our minds so we may make some good decisions for the city of Rioran de Citi. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of its lands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am on the Texas flag, pledging its virginity, Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Next, business and orders, item 1B, roll call and finding a quorum in Spina.
Mayor Villarreal.
Here.
Mayor Protim Garza. Mayor Protim Garza Izarzti. Commissioner Flores.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, business and orders, item 2A, first public hearing regarding the proposed city of Rioran de Citi at the lower tax rate of .507579 per hundred valuation. Do we have anyone signed up?
No.
For a public committee? Any other comments on that? Mr. Perez?
Okay.
Good to go.
Okay. For the record, no one signed up for the public hearing as far as, should I say, speaking here in front regarding this at the lower tax rate? It is 6:21. This time is the end of public hearing. Next, business and orders, item 3, City Manager's Report, letter A, consideration and approval of a plan of finance for the city of Rioran de Citi, combination tax and revenue refunding bonds, Series 2019.
Mayor, Commissioner, you've got Mr. Tejera, press it to address that topic.
Thank you, Mr. Bettis, and everybody, County Commissioners. For the record, Robert Tejera with Tejera Galvano Lawrence, the city's financial advisor. I handed out a plan of finance earlier for the 2019 refunding. This is the same financing we've discussed over the last few months, on the opportunity that the city can move forward with on lowering the interest rate, going from a higher rate to a lower rate. So if you look at page 2, the two financings we're considering to lower the interest rate on would be the combination tax and revenue certificates obligation, Series 2007C, and the combination tax and limited pledge revenue certificates obligation, Series 2010. The 2010 financing took care of majority streets, curb, gutter, parks, and the 2007C financing was a water development board financing, mainly for water projects. The amount we're looking to refinance is about $10,975,000. In the shaded area on page 2, net present value savings, about $1,863,000. The percent of savings of refunded bonds, 16.978%. Anytime you have a refinancing where you're saving 3% or higher, it's something you want to consider and move forward with. So right now, we're well above that. It's gotten even better than the last time I was here presenting it, and even from the first time. And we all know what we're seeing in the market right now, the recession. Mr. Bettis, Mr. Cantu, and I talked about it earlier. The recession fed potentially lowering interest rates. Either one of scenarios that takes place, all it's going to do is make this financing even better and allow the city to save even more money if interest rates continue to go down. So the average annual savings is about $121,000. Combining both financings, the 2007C and the 2010 COs, we're looking at an overall interest rate of about 4.908%. If we were in the market a few weeks ago, we would go from 4.908% to 2.57%, and we feel that's even going to come down even lower in the next few weeks. If you turn to page 3, this is just the principal amount of the financings. On page 3, the majority on the right-hand side is the 2007C water development board financing, and at that time, those interest rates 12 years ago were great interest rates. Whenever you go to the Water Development Board, they're going to give you below-market interest rates. So these were fantastic at the time. You had two other financings that were at 0% at the time, so we're not going to refinance those. So this is the only one we're considering, either the water development board financing. Below that is the 2010, and again, nine years ago, a 4% interest rate was a great interest rate, but it's even lower now, and the only reason, again, it's even becoming lower than a few weeks ago, recession and talk of interest rates being cut by the Federal Reserve.
It appears that the Feds are going to be lowering the interest rates.
Potentially next month, and maybe even another round. I know they're getting pressure from the President and the discussions he's had, I know Mr. Bettis and I and Mr. Cantu are going back and forth, what is going to happen if he keeps putting pressure on there. But either scenario, if they lower interest rates, it avoids a recession. It's still going to help this financing. If they don't lower interest rates and it goes into a recession, it's going to make the financing even better. So either scenario is going to play into the city's benefit. Now, if you turn to page 4, we have the principal and interest on both financings on the second column from the left, prior debt service. At the very bottom, it's $16,485,000. If we had already sold the bonds and received that interest rate of about 2.57%, the next column, refunding debt service, those would be our new principal and interest payments. So we go from $16.4 million to $14,057,000. The shaded area overall is $2.4 million of savings, future value, and again, we have about $121,000 savings overall, and 16.97%, which is again, well above the 3% that we recommend you consider moving forward with. Now, on page 5, it is the timetable. We have some flexibility here. This item is approved. All it does is allow us to go and start the document process, and if we can get a certain percent savings or better, we'll price the bonds. We'll have a rating call on the week of September 30th, and we will price the bonds on October the 23rd. Everything goes well, sell the bonds in the open market, and the signatures, Mr. Martinez will discuss that in a couple items, here in a couple items later, to discuss whether it's the signature of the city manager or the signature and/or the mayor to sign up on the bond purchase agreement. Then we close the financing on November the 21st. If interest rates, for some reason, if interest rates just shoot up, they go away, they resolve the tension in China, the US, the tariffs between the US and Mexico, interest rates go up, all of a sudden, this financing goes away, it doesn't make sense, you incur no costs, financing won't get done, but that's not going to happen. We don't get.
It appears that that's a tall order there.
That's a tall tale. But just in case, if this financing doesn't happen, no one's going to charge, won't be charged by the FAA or by bond counsel. So again, financing priced on October 23rd, November the 21st. If you go to the next page, page 6, Working Group Participants, we have the issuer, City of Rio Grande Citi, financial advisor, co-bond counsel. I know one representative, Mr. Dan Martinez of Buengstedt is here. Mr. Rick Bettis is not in the audience this evening, but the paying agent, and Mr. Bettis was the individual that was here a few months ago with my prior firm, paying agent as well as Fargo. The underwriters, this is our plan, is to go in the open market and sell the bonds, get a good low interest rate, go out there and get a good bond rating. The city back in 2010 attained a bond rating from Standard and Poor's. The bond rating was removed by Standard and Poor's last October, and the reason was because the audits were not done on time. So that was the only reason that the rating was removed. So these two underwriters, Hilltop Securities and Seabird Sisneto Shanken Company, they're going to go out there and sell the bonds. They're going to get the investors together to raise the money to do this refunding. Looking at everything that's happened over the last nine years, since 2010, the last time we sold bonds in the open market, this isn't the same city from nine years ago. It's gotten bigger, it's gotten more traffic, as Mr. Bettis said, which is a great storyline to tell Standard and Poor's. 40,000 cars go through this road every single day, 35,000, 40,000 cars. The traffic, the sales tax has gone up. You have the auditor that has signed on and willing to get the audit done within six months of fiscal year end. That is extremely key, the audit getting done and getting done on time before the end of March. So we can go out there, tell a good story, get a good bond rating, and try, every time that you're looking to do a financing, consider the open market to try to get that bond rating up, increasing your fund balance on the M&amp;O side, and also look at the utilities, start setting up a good reserve. So the city's moving in the right direction. It's going to be a good story to tell when we meet with the rating companies sometime in late September. I know it's a lot of information. Underwriters' counsel will be determined by the underwriters of Hilltop Securities and Seabird Sisneto. I know it's a lot of information, but Mayor, Commissioners, anybody has any questions?
Well, the primary number is that $1.8 million savings, obviously.
Yes, sir.
A percentage, and it's an exceptional opportunity for us to take on this.
This.
Saving $1.8 million in taxpayer payments or future expenses, it's a great opportunity for us to take on this, this opportunity.
Absolutely, and we applaud the commission, the city manager, and the staff for getting the audit done. I hear it's the 2018 audit is going to be approved here in the next week or so. That is going to be turned around quickly to us. We're going to start preparing the official statement that this item is approved and send that audit to the NRM serves, the MAC. Everybody's going to review it. The underwriters will review it, so we think it's going to be a good story and good financing to tell here in the next couple of months.
Mr. Tejera, how many years we have left on the bonds we have now?
The bonds, these two or the other ones?
The ones we're refinancing now.
The ones, okay.
We have ten.
The ones we're refinancing now, if you go to page, and that's a good question, Mayor, Commissioner, if you go to page 3, these are the maturities on page 3. On the 2007C, you paid from 2008 to 2019. So right now, you have all the way to 2040, 20 years left on the water development board deal.
So we're not going to add more years, we're going to still stick to 20.
Absolutely, and that's a great point. A great point. I apologize that I didn't cover that. We're looking to keep the maturity the same. What you see here, it's not going to go any further out on this structure, so the furthest we're going to go out is 2040, and we're going to wrap in the ones below the 2010 financing. It goes to 2030, so we're going to take that 2021 to 2030 on the bottom and just overlap it and blend it in to the ones on top. And you're right, Commissioner, the question is, are we going to extend it?
Right.
If you extend it, what you're doing, you're adding additional interest to your name, you're adding additional debt. You don't want to do that. We're not shortening it up either, we're just keeping the same and taking advantage of the low rates and not trying to incur any other debt and do a true refunding, which is a true savings. And if you notice, Commissioner, on the next page, every year, it's a positive savings. On page 4, it's a decrease, so every year, you're going to benefit from this refunding.
Why is the saving in year one so small compared to the rest?
Because that one is so close, the call date. We already have fiscal year ending coming right, fiscal year ending 2020, so it's going to be minimal, and we're closing, we're going to be closing in November the 20th. So we're already going to be two, three months into next fiscal year, two months into next fiscal year. So the savings won't be so much on the first year, and it's going to be on year two all the way down, because we have already started the fiscal year end, the payments are coming close by, so it's not going to be that advantageous on year one until year two.
Mr. Tejera?
Yes, sir.
I understand the schedule you've got, so when you price the bonds and all that, but if we notice there's some activity that reflects a better advantage for the city going into September and possibly October, could this be adjusted to make sure we take advantage and not go off too soon?
Absolutely, and on the page 5 on the timetable, we have rating agency and due diligence conference call. We can, and then we're going to price October 23rd. If we feel, and again, this, the July 31st Federal Reserve, when they cut rates on July 31st, the market had already priced that in. The market said, hey, we already know, back in May, they said, we know a rate cut is coming. June, they knew. Now they're saying, if you don't cut it, we're going to react differently. So you guys need to cut it. The economists were saying, has to be done. So the September cut, Mayor, you said earlier, we already know something's going to happen next month. The market's already priced that in. If we feel between now and September that there's going to be potentially another cut in October, we may wait until that Fed funds makes another cut to price the bonds. So what you see here on page 5, it's not set in stone. There's a lot of room here, a lot of flexibility to give yourself some time to see what the Fed's going to do, not only in September, but also in October. So you have flexibility to move some key gates there.
And just to reiterate Commissioner Ramirez's point is that, just to be clear, that we're not extending any years, I mean, it's still the same period that we've had before. The main difference here is the lowered interest rate, and that's critical in reference to refinancing, because sometimes they have that perception that we're extending the years, but we're not at this point. Again, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner, because that's the important point in holding up to what, of course, are taxpayers, and it is critical, again, to reiterate that point, that we're not extending the time period, it's still the same. The only difference is the tax rate or.
The savings.
The savings of 1.8 million?
Yes, sir, 1.8 million.
Preliminary. Preliminary within the same time period, and thank you for bringing that up again. Anything else on this item? If not, then do we entertain a motion at this time?
I assume.
Okay, so.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez, item 3A. Have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion on this item? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, for your trust and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, business and orders, item 4A, resolutions, discussion and possible action to approve resolution 2019-17, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to transfer approximately 12.44 plus minus acres of real property located along north FM 649, Rioran de Citi, Starr County, Texas, and known as AB 92, Portion 78 de la Garza, Track 30 to Eloy Gonzalez Garza and Ana Kay de la Cruz, for the purchase price of $65,000, and declaring an effective date.
Commissioner, Mayor, about approximately a year ago, is that correct, Chief? We, this is a property that was seized by the police department, it belongs to them. We attempted to go out and sell it or auction it off about a year ago, and there were some issues, they did not being cleared, ready to go. We cleared all the obstacles paperwork-wise. There was also a trailer home that's not really in good condition, but it belonged to somebody else that also had to be cleared. We've come back now, it's ready to go. We advertised it, we quickly got an offer, and I believe the first time we went out, we're at 40-some thousand.
That's correct.
And we've been able to squeeze more by waiting because of the market itself also. So we got an offer for $65,000 right now. And I'll let the Chief discuss it further.
This is a property that was seized back in 2013, and just the process took this long, and you know, it's something that we can't use because it's not within the city, it's actually in very, well, not very far, but several miles out of our jurisdiction. If it was something usable, we probably could have used it for something, but this will help us with a forfeiture account, and there is some money owed from a lien from this property that we have to return, so we should still be getting a good chunk of money on this city. So the recommendation is to go there with the resolution.
Question, Commissioners, or not at this time, do we have a motion?
I assume.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution 2019-17 by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, business and orders, item 5A, ordinances, consideration and approval of ordinance 2019-1, authorizing the issuance of City of Rioran de Citi, Texas, limited tax refunding bonds, Series 2019, a paying agent register agreement and an escrow agreement providing for the sale of such bonds, delegating authority to city representatives to select obligations to be refunded and approved, final terms of the bonds, and approving all other matters related thereto.
Mayor, I'm Mr. Commissioner, for the record, Dan Martinez of Buengstedt C.C., it's a pleasure to be here. I'm on the agenda, hopefully, in the next five minutes, but just to, by way of background, I'm attorney, a bond attorney out of San Antonio. I've been practicing in this area for about 16 years. Do a lot of work in this area, in the valley and south here, Laredo all the way to Cameron County. I represent a lot of communities, school districts, you know, special districts, counties, all types of issuers throughout the state generally. Our firm has been in this business for about 40 years in terms of bond law. We have worked with Mr. Tejera relating to the plan of finance he just presented. So before you, you have an ordinance that will officially authorize that, moving forward that plan of finance. And as Mr. Tejera mentioned, the beauty of this type of ordinance that we have prepared is called a parameter ordinance, and what that does is allows us to move forward with the financing, but again, we'd have to hit certain hurdles to make sure we, before we actually execute and move forward on those, on the financing. And so I think you mentioned, could we accelerate that and move that forward? And by doing this type of ordinance, we have that authorization already in place, and so because we've started the documentation, if the market dictated that, we could move forward really quickly and not have to come back to the council, the commission for further authority. With that said, as it mentioned in the caption, we delegate authority to certain representatives, that be the city manager, the mayor, to finalize and execute those documents, considering that we would meet those hurdles as identified by Mr. Tejera. This parameter, other thing we mentioned was that, you know, say the market would move or we might want to wait a little longer, this authority is good for 120 days, so basically, I'm sorry, 180, six months. And so we have that authority to execute at that point if we needed to in that case as well. So there's some, again, the beauty of that, we have that flexibility built into this ordinance. However, at the end of the day, is we're going to execute basically on the plan of finance, where it identifies the bonds to be refunded, and again, it says we have to hit certain savings before we can actually execute, and that's all drafted in the document. Of course, there's a long caption that identifies all the ancillary type agreements that we have to enter into with respect to the bonds, et cetera, so that's all incorporated into this ordinance. I would like to reiterate one of the things Mr. Tejera mentioned was with respect to your audits. Because we are going to be entering the market and going back as market participants, it's very important, there's a lot more emphasis these days on what's called continuing disclosure, and that is basically a recording requirement by issuers when they do enter into the markets to provide updated annual information, as you guys have done before. But there's been more emphasis on that because of just the volatility that can be there in the market. You generally don't see that in municipal issuers, but there's been more of this lately and more, they've actually added more requirements for us to provide in terms of that disclosure. So I just want to reiterate that that is incorporated to this document as well. I will say this as you're, if we're engaged here with Mr. Bettis' offer, we do work with the staff and your city attorney or what have you, and your financial advisor to make sure that we can address any questions that you might have with respect to your continued disclosure, or anything related to your bonds for that matter, or the use of proceeds of things of that nature. But with respect to your disclosure, we help identify issues, help prepare the actual filing documents if needed, if there's an event that has to be disclosed, things of that nature, and that's part of our role. We do separate apart from our necessary, our normal bond issuance process. So I just want to share that information with you. We take an approach that it's a team effort, we work closely with your financial advisor and your staff to make sure we execute on things, we don't drop the ball. Everybody's got a whole set of eyes on everything, and we get things to the finish line. So we take that approach, and if anybody has any questions regarding the ordinance, I'll be glad to answer them.
Well, and the main question is, going back to what Mr. Tejera mentioned, if, if for some reason, again, the interest rates go up and for some reason, everything was just so wonderful, as you mentioned, the trade issues are resolved and all these other, I mean, at this point, it wouldn't cost us anything on your end either, with your service.
That's correct. There's no fees until we close the deal.
Until it's closed and until.
Yeah.
We know that we're moving forward, then at that point.
Yeah, we don't get paid till closing, so we get paid out of closing, the proceeds from closing. So it's really not out-of-pocket per se, from the city's budget per se. It's like a closing cost, so all the fees are paid out of the closing. So that's typically how we do it. You know, we can be engaged for other matters, and we're full-service law firm, whatever, we can do that, but with respect to your bond issue and how this 50 engagement works is, we don't get paid until the closing.
Until the closing, everything has worked out and.
And again, Chief, even if we, you know, say the market, you know, is drastic and goes the other way, and the savings is not there, you know, we just sit on the silent until we're ready to pull that trigger, and if that time expires, we just have to come back and.
And hopefully, that's not the case, right? We don't want to, we want this to work out, obviously, and it seems that it is going in that direction, and hopefully, it is, because again, it's a great opportunity for us to.
And I do want.
Buy it with a savings, so.
And I did want to highlight again, that again, we're, based on the kind of finance, we're expecting a certain amount of savings, and we have some flexibility built into this document, but we do incorporate the fact that, based on the number of runs and the market, what he's, what the financial advisor was determining, Mr. Tejera, is that we're going to achieve a certain amount of savings. So we incorporated it into the document that we want to hit a minimum 10% savings. Right now, we're above that, so it gives us a little cushion, we can go either way. We hope it's going to go even higher, but we have that cutoff. So we won't execute on the deal until, unless we hit that minimum, and so we want to make sure we hit that. And we won't execute or in terms of, you know, the authorization won't go through unless we hit that hurdle. And so when we price the bonds, my job is to, again, do all the documentation, work with the purchaser of the bonds, and then I will submit all the documents to the Attorney General for approval. And so they'll confirm in that submission that we hit all those hurdles that we said we're going to hit based on today's authorization.
Okay. Any other questions? Now, we're ready to entertain a motion?
I assume, Mayor, to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item 5A, which is ordinance 2019-1.
What's your motion?
By Commissioner Jones. Have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. Any further discussion on this item? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, business and orders, item 6, Contracts and Agreements, letter A, consideration and approval of a bond counsel engagement agreement.
Mayor, Commissioners, you've got documents there, you'll notice there's a co-bond counsel engagement letter prepared. Go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you again. As I mentioned, we typically work or have worked with other minority firms in this market. You know, I'm a minority and, you know, work at a bigger firm, and I think it's always helpful to reach out to firms that are smaller and really support minorities that engage in this type of work. It's complex, but you know, we're there to support other firms as well, and I typically in the past, worked with other minorities or some minority firms in this line of work. I do, I do a lot of work in Laredo, I represent all the issuers in Laredo except the city, and so I have a co-counsel there as well, and I've done some work with Rick in the valley as well, closer to Central Valley, and so we submitted to a co-bond counsel, we need to be here with you today. Unfortunately, Rick couldn't make it today, so I told him I'd take him, and I apologize on his behalf, but I hope, you know, you have confidence and we can definitely handle the work for you guys. He has a lot of experience himself, he does represent issuers in the middle valley as well. Sometimes in this work, if you recall, on the plan of finance, it references your bond counsel and then it represents underwriters' counsel, and so a lot of times, we're on opposite sides as well. So we have experience working together and opposite each other as the purchasers' counsel or the issuer's counsel. So in this case, you know, we take an approach to, you know, to consider a co-bond counsel engagement, if that's what you like.
And that was my question, Mr. Martinez, to Mr. Bettis, why there was the need for co-counsel?
It's a local representation.
Is it more for convenience, I suppose, or?
I think, I'm sorry.
Having co-counsel, is this more for convenience and having local representation here in case you are not available?
It's, I think, your preference, we can do whatever you prefer, I mean.
The fees will not increase behind co-counsel, be the same? So you guys will arrange whatever fees get cut up, whichever way you all see them?
Definitely, we, that's, that's a great question, and we don't add any additional fees, it's the same as if it was one, and it's a shared fee.
But as far as how y'all divide that payment, it's up between you both?
Correct, we do not add any additional-
There will not be additional expenses to the city?
And your, your safeguarder here will make sure of that, your financial advisor, and of course, with the consultation of your City Manager and staff, but it's a great question, a very fair question, and I thank you for asking that, but, no, that, that's not the intent here, we will, you know, it's, as if we were one, and, you know, it's, how do you feel if you want to move forward?
Mr. Perez, what's your recommendation?
Recommended, we can have a, a local representative.
Mr. Calistro, Yarriel Lechu-
Yeah, we did review this contract, it's standard for co-council on bond issues, and Mr. Perez, I believe, was here last time also, and when this issue came up, about the bond.
The only question I have is on the, the turn to page, I guess, four, under, from previous experiences, I guess, bringing this under termination?
Yes, sir.
The issuer may terminate the agreement at any time, however, co-bond council will be compensated for work done, expenses incurred prior to termination, what, how do we read this, how do we interpret this?
Well, again, I mentioned, we don't, we get paid out of, of, you know, the bond council engagement if we close a deal, if we started a project and we don't close, or if we don't fees, I think that's more referencing, if we had some other type of work that we were doing, that was authorized by the Commission or by staff, that, that's something we would wanna be compensated for, but with respect to your bond council work, you know, again, you're paid at the end of the, at the deal, you know, both of the deals.
Mr. Yarriel, does this need to be worded differently, or does this, how does this reflect?
Well, we can, if, if, if you wish, we can word it a little bit different, I understand your, your concern, but again, co-council would come in under your-
Correct, yeah.
Where there would be no fees, obviously, if fee doesn't get paid, co-council doesn't get paid.
Okay.
And-
Then we're good with it?
Yes.
Yeah, and we do reference how we stated initially on page two, that they're payable at the time of delivery of the bonds, and so we get paid out of the proceeds of the bond.
Where's that at?
Where's that at?
Page two, at the very last paragraph, fees will be paid at the time of delivery and payment of the bond, so we get, we get paid out of the, out of the transaction, so it's not out of pocket. And that's how we typically do it, so, that's a fair question, and a great question.
All right, so we have a recommendation by City Manager, Mr. Perez, at this time-
I assume so.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Flores, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, appreciate your support, thank you very much.
Next, business and orders, item 6B, discussion and possible action to approve contract with Los Traileros del Norte for the music services scheduled on September 7, 2019, for the Viva Mexico fifth annual event, 6B.
Commissioner and Mayor, we are working on the Viva Mexico event, and-
The mafia tutor?
(laughing) You can do it all the time.
I know, I know.
Uh, this is something Ms. Anna's been working on while Ms. Hernandez has been out in the city, I believe, we're ready to go and all that, there, we do have plans for the future on maybe coming up with a boilerplate for contracts with all artists, artists that we contract for events, they tend to be-
Similar.
Yeah, you know, and, and how they wanna be compensated and all that, and we're just looking out for in the future, discussing with, with legal, but it's pretty straightforward, what we've done before with them, so it's nothing different, they're ready, we've all communicated with them, and it should be a good event.
The only question I have, Mr. Perez, is that I noticed here, and Red Letter's set up a lot, but again, it's effective, does that mean they wanna get paid in cash? Is that something that we normally do, I mean?
It's, it's not, it's, it's not uncommon, and some of these artists will ask, they're coming from Mexico, and so they are from Mexico, and that's the reason they ask for the cash.
Interesting.
Wait, did we clear, we have a-
We clear with a band.
We're clear with a band, we're not any-
(laughing) We probably have PD go along with us, we have receipts for it, so-
The other question I had is, I know is that it's, it's gonna be from 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM, is that a reason, is there a reason why we're going to 2:00 AM, opposed to 8:01 or 9:01?
That's what Ms. Hernandez had originally set up, I don't know if there's, Ms. Anna's not here, there was particular reason why it goes that long, but she, that's what she had communicated with me before. We can shorten it?
No, I'm just, you know, just curious, 2:00, 2:00 AM is usually not something that's normally done, it's usually 1:00, but-
Sure.
Just curious. I'm sure the music's good, people will stay at 2:00 AM.
Just so.
All right, so at this time, we, are we at it, or are we ready for a motion?
I assume so, to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Jones.
A second.
Have a second by Commissioner Flores, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, business and orders, item 7, planning, letter A, discussion and possible action on certificate of appropriateness for mural project for a building located at 506 East Main Street, Rio Grande City, Texas.
Mr. Guia, Mr. Milan?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Ms. Guia, Commissioner Milan?
Typically, this would be presented by planning, but as it is a project of the Main Street, it is something that I'm, I've got the details on, a mural project was programmed and approved by the EDC in this year's work plan, and we had a inventory of some downtown properties, and they were assessed for the project earlier this year. We had a solicitation for artists in the spring, and a selection for the proposed site, and the artist was reviewed and recommended by the Main Street Advisory Board, and approved by the Rio Grande City Historical Commission during its meeting in August. In your packet, you have a couple of examples, I hope they do, yes, they do, of the location, which is at 506 East Main Street in downtown Rio Grande City. We have two artists, Mr. Oscar Ortiz of La Jolla, Texas, and Jose Arándula Puente of Rio Grande City, who are proposing to paint the mural, it's a five by six, and there's also some examples of their work in your packet, for you to look at, but this is one of the initiatives that the Main Street has taken on to help attract more visitors to our downtown area and add some color, and of course, with Mr. Milan here, these colors and proposed plans have been approved by the Historical Commission.
Ms. Guia, the memorandum says that it says size five by 10.
Right, five feet by 10 feet.
Oh, okay, 'cause you said six, so it's five by 10?
Oh, five by 10, yes.
And these are examples, examples of some of their work, or what do-
They have, so if you look, there's some dragon-like art, that's, those are examples of what they have done, and so just to attest to the quality of their art, but what they are proposing is the We Are Rio mural, and, and then of course, you see just the color concept in the second image. And they're really excited to start on this project, I know we have a local artist being from here who wants to help with this, so we bring this for your approval.
It appears that the blue color kind of druns out all the other buildings and whatnot in the picture, is that what it's gonna look like at the end, or is that just a-
No, I don't think so, I think what we're looking at is a computer-generated image, and so it is pretty dark, so I think they just took a picture of the screen and sent that over as their example. If you look at some of the artwork that they have, you see how the color contrast is blended, and so I, as an artist, I'm pretty sure they're gonna make sure that the end product has-
The idea is to copy what's the, the first one, the black and white one?
Right.
That one looks really nice, even the font and all that looks really nice.
Right. So with your permission, they'll proceed with the project, and the property owner has agreed to have this artwork installed on his property wall. And we have documents from legal that have been provided to grant his permission.
It's time, do we-
I assume so.
Take a motion? We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, thank you very much, Commissioner Milan, Ms. Guia, this time, we have a motion to-
I assume so.
We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Flores, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned, it is 6:59 PM.